Are we all back?
Think so.
There are no guests waiting.
All right, we'll resume the meeting then. Trustee Coligan in reports, I think you don't have an school officers association meeting?
No, it'll be Wednesday. I have it one Wednesday. They just scheduled it this week.
Okay, so we'll delete 5.2. And we'll also delete 5.4 as well.
And I don't know if you want to do it now or during add it to the agenda. I just want to talk about superintendent's evaluation and just some thoughts. Start to put a great together Google form, but I don't know if you want me to do that during new business or add it to the agenda.
Let's do that under new business.
Okay, thank you. And second, I don't mean this, but I just want to be sure that we add on there too. And that might be during new businesses, senior activities. We've had a little bit of dialogue around that. I just want to be sure we're on the same page for that tonight.
Okay.
Actually, we added, I did add you on the agenda for that trustee Coligan.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark, I think you might be muted.
No. The icon's not there. It's just sounds not coming through. Mark, I'm not getting any sound.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can.
I don't know where I was at when I was muted.
At the beginning.
All right. So this is the public comment section. And for anyone who would like to address the board, this is the time that you could do so. But please remember, this is not a dialogue with the board. There is a five minute time limit per speaker. We ask that you be courteous and that you do not mention any student names or any employee names. And then lastly, if you could state your name for the record in trustee bureau, you have some people that have signed up.
I have two Sally Hawk Harrison. Is Sally present?
I don't see her name on the screen.
And Jeanne Tippett.
I'm present this evening.
Okay, and okay, Jeanne, you're all set.
Thank you. My name is Jeanne Anderson Tippett. I'm here today to address you with the same concern I brought up at your last board meeting. The lies and secrets, they are like a cancer of the soul. They eat away what is good and leave only destruction behind. I quote Cassandra Clare as the sentiment rings true at this time. The administrators I'm speaking about this evening have done some great things for whole public schools and for its students. There are men in positions that I have deep respect for. And although we have not always agreed on the issues, we have worked productively to solve them. My respect for them has been deeply shaken by the reports in the press that they were aware of sexual abuse of students. Having multiple people report to them both verbally and in writing that there was sexual abuse happening on campus obligates them to respond. That obligation is both legal and moral. They are obligated by Michigan's mandated reporter laws to have reported any suspicion of abuse to authorities. They were not obligated to prove those allegations or to meet with the accused or to counsel the accused, but they are obligated to report suspicion of abuse. Administrators failed that obligation every time that the abuse was reported to them, and they have failed that obligation every day since. They carry a moral obligation as sentient persons. They understood the behavior of the abuser was causing harm to children. They swept that under the rug. They didn't alert parents to the abuse so that the parents might provide intervention or counseling for these victims. They didn't remove the perpetrator from his position of authority. These men let the abuse continue, and that is on their hands. I hope it weighs heavily on them because it should. Their failure to fulfill their obligations will outweigh the good things that they have done in this district. Their continued bad judgment and cover up of abuse is a shocking disappointment. It now becomes a matter for you, the members of the board, to address. How will you handle the employment of all the people who allow this abuse to continue by hiding and protecting the guilty instead of standing up for the innocent? Their actions make a mockery of what Washington Woods and whole public schools is supposed to stand for. Do not go along with this system of protecting abusers and those who allow the abuse to continue. You must immediately suspend all of the accused until such time as the evidence either convicts or absolves them. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Tippett. Trustee Bureau, is there anyone else?
Unless Sally Hawk Harrison has arrived, I have no one else that has pre-signed up.
Okay, we'll close the public comment section of the board meeting and move to the board minutes. Board members, you have the April 20 regular board minute meetings in front of you. And when you have a chance, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the meetings as meeting minutes for April 20 as presented.
Have a first.
All support.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the dispersments for the month of April, both in check and in credit cards. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Now that I'm unmuted, I will make a motion to pay the bills. So my apologies on the last one. Was wondering why nobody supported my motion.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the final discipline for student A, and I'll turn that over to trustee Robo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The final decision for student A was suspension for the remainder of the 1920 school year.
Was the committee unanimous in that decision?
No.
But there was a majority.
I wonder if we should reconvene this one for next month. Would that be a decent idea?
Yes.
Okay. Let's pause on 4.4.
Okay, 4.4 is tabled until the next board meeting.
Thank you.
So moving to gifts, Dr. Horak, I'll turn this over to you if you could run through those gifts for us.
Absolutely. I'm very excited to say that we have collected $5,247 total in that those that total ends up dropping into three different buckets. $4,675 for our food service and our drive to continue to provide groceries to our families at all of our remote locations. So rather than accepting food donations, we're asking for financial support in an effort to keep all of our stakeholders safe and healthy. The more people who touch food, the more opportunity there is for some contamination. So moving forward, we have now quite a nice little bucket of money that we're using to buy food that is then shipped from the warehouse to our central office, central kitchen, excuse me, and then packaged and then again distributed on our mobile food drops. The other is to $422 for the 3D printing, and that is to replace the filament that we're using to print the masks and $150 for the class of 2020 senior science. So really tickled with the the support that we're receiving from our public.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the ISD's general fund budget resolution. This is the 2020-2021 proposed budget of the ISD. In your board package, you should have the information of that budget. And if I'm not mistaken, they do require us to approve this as a constituent school district.
That's correct.
I just wondered that because I feel like the financials have really changed. Would they have to come if we approved this, will they come back if it if there's big changes? I just that's a question I have.
Well, I don't have the answer to that. I would imagine if there is an amended budget, it would circle back through.
Thank you. So I make a motion to approve the ISD proposed budget for 2020-21 school year.
Support that.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
President, can I discuss, did we need to vote on the gifts? Accepting the gifts?
Thank you, trustee Dalton. So would you like to make that motion?
Sure. Before we go back though, can I ask something about that ISD's?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering with our contracts and with the what's going on, how will we work if we've got a contract to go with them moving forward? Will that impact this agreement with their budget or no? Meaning kids that we send there or shared busing, any of those things? Are we held to whatever we have a contract with them, Dave? And I'm just asking that because I feel like things have changed.
Things have changed. Right now, for instance, busing is special ed and that's, you know, somewhat on hold. There is an existing contract with Dean to hold the spot, but it's it's at a much reduced level. In terms of our career center and have you, I think that's all dependent on enrollment at the moment. And then our special ed kids that go out there also somewhat dependent on enrollment as well.
So we won't be held to we're sending this money or for this amount of money, it will be we'll be able to have some kind of negotiation with them?
It I'm going with some assumptions, but I have our next soup's meeting is on Wednesday, and I will bring some clarity to that. I am not hearing anything at this point about being held to a, you know, a range of funds based on kids.
And my understanding is we're approving their budget. We're not approving a recommendation to a contractual minimum of anything.
Correct. Dead it trustee Coligan?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so let's go back to 4.5. I'll entertain a motion to accept these gifts.
Oh, I make a motion that we accept the gifts.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll move to the report section of the board meeting, and I believe I saw Joey is with us.
I think Isabel's with us too.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Isabel. So go ahead with your report.
Um, well, I'll start off with the seniors. I know every Tuesday I'm meeting with Willard and a couple of other staff members to set up some senior activities. I know that seniors are picking up their caps and gowns on the 12th. So tomorrow, I believe. Yes, tomorrow. We're also looking for some hashtags to create some stickers for cars and just small things. We also talked about a graduation on the football field. I don't know if you guys are aware of that yet, but that should take place either at the end of June or the beginning of August.
Okay, thank you. Joey, did you have anything? You're muted right now if you there you go. Go ahead, Joey. All right, maybe he's not with us. We'll move to 5.3 trustee Coligan. You have a report on the graduating class of 2020.
Um, Mr. Willard pulled together a group of us. There's counselors, teachers, and students, as you had heard, coming together to figure out what we're going to do for the 2020 class graduating this year. And so whether did a great job of having us organized with from the 3.5 to 3.75 top 10 senior breakfast, prom, and graduation. We're really in the planning stage. We've kind of reached, we're given tasks to move forward. The only dates, and I had to leave it a little bit early to go to our finance meeting, but the only date that we really, really talked about was really around that graduation date. All the other dates are kind of pretty much either we're going to mail something or something virtual. Our one of our high school counselors was able to go through MSU and get signs for all of our seniors. It's not the signs that had their picture on them, but a sign that says, you know, we grad, I can't remember, you graduated or you're moving on to the next. I can't remember the phrases, but they're free. So we thought it would be great to have, you know, I think for these seniors, the more the merrier for them. And so they were just wondering exactly when the timeline knows we're going to be coming in so that we would get them out into the community. As you know, top 10, we usually give it sponsor them a dinner and maybe usually have it at the Charlar place. We were talking as a committee of maybe getting one of our local restaurants to sponsor that so if family could go pick it up, they take a picture of them having it with a hashtag and we can kind of celebrate it that way. And then 3.5, we usually had a dinner or three set or the 3.75. One of my roles or task was to get with local businesses. We were thinking like an ice cream cone or something from Sweet Sensations, a pizza, something that we could come together and just celebrate then and send it with their certificate so it could still be a celebration. I think we were going to ask the senior class to come up with some hashtags so that we could have this all connected in some way. The breakfast, I know that they were trying to work out of maybe having a drive by and them picking it, picking something up as a breakfast. I know that whole public schools talked about or making that breakfast for us. So we have another meeting tomorrow. So everything's kind of really up in the air. And I know that some of the trustees had asked about dates and having those up after you said, I think it was Ms. Robo had sent something. I just want to be sure. No dates have really been published, except I think some dates went out to families, which Isabella shared today. So we're really in the beginning planning session. So entertain questions or any ideas that we might have forgotten. We did talk about prom, in-person prom is definitely not in in the works at all for our area. Mr. Willard had many of the principals asked if we could be consistent. So like if we really canceled prom, that we'd all cancel it. And so they were working of maybe of doing something virtual with the DJ. A DJ had reached out to them and Isabella kind of spoke up and said, we already knew we were going to kind of miss that. So we were going to get a poll out to families or the seniors to see what their thoughts were. So and then graduation, I know May 15th was a date that they were going to be looking at to make some more of those decisions. So I know they were trying to push that back as for as far as they could so that they could have it if we could have it in person. So those are kind of the big buckets. And like I said, what we're thinking about for all the 3.5 and that is either going to be send a mailing or whatever. And we were thinking of a hashtag that they could put on a sticker, an emblem to put on cars for the students and the parents. But I think that's all for now. Christine was also able to be there. She might be on the pipe and if there's something I've forgotten.
Laura, I love the idea of the various dinners and meals, and I would help sponsor if it was a Taco Tuesdays for whatever that's worth, like a Charlie's or Coaches would be a great idea.
Thank you much. Yeah, I started a list and I was definitely, I think lots of people wanted to help us trying to get it all put into a place. So I reached I reached out to Mr. Brown and and some of those to see how we can bring it all together. So hopefully in the next week, we'll we'll be contacting and getting donations and things. Dr. Horak, the other thing I was supposed to ask was if we don't have it in persons, could some of those funds that we use for breath and be diverted to other areas for food or some other ways or you might not be able to answer now, but I just that was a little question.
That's a great question as well, and I'll document that. I I think this is one of those years that we're going to try to be as flexible as we possibly can be to honor which seniors as often as we possibly can.
And then the other question that the committee had, and I tried to connect with Julie earlier today, but we weren't able to connect. They were asking about being able to publish the seniors' names with their pictures and with our Palestine. When I looked that up, shoot, I left that paper downstairs about having permissions for that. And then I looked under the FIPPA law or whatever, you know, might be there. And I think it would be okay with what it was saying is that we need to have permission. So if their their emergency card had permission about pictures, or if we had a Google form that the parents or the seniors, if they're 18, sign that so that we could publish their names with that. Because we also talked about like the 3.5, having a banner with everybody who got a 3.5, like a big like vinyl banner that we could put out on the road opposite the like make that, you know, like an alleyway for our graduates or something. So that was a question. And maybe Julie, you can it's 57 something was the policy that I looked it up around that. But just want to have a discussion with the group about that.
Yeah, I think it's 7544.
That's it.
8083 8330 does give leeway on 8330 gives leeway on us with what we consider directory information. If requested, we can put it out. So if we're going to do, if we're going to do big groups like that, like if we're going to have a banner that has like all the 3.75 on it, that would be the best way to do it. If we're looking at like doing individual pictures, I would worry about representing, making sure everybody's represented. But like I had suggested to Dr. Horak, I think anything that we would normally publish in a in the commencement program or in a something of that nature, if we did it like as a group, I don't think that there's going to be a big problem with it. Just make sure you double check that there aren't any people who do not have permissions on their cards. But again, I know Mrs. Dalton and I had a discussion over the weekend of it because I'm hearing a couple different, I'm getting the same question a couple different ways from people. So yeah, I would encourage if we were going to have like a page that looked like the commencement thing that had all their names with maybe their scholarships listed or their names with their potential plans afterwards, I think that's that's a good, a good thing to do. And a banner is completely different from what the 7544 was talking about as far as social media. So one covers this if we do a banner or something like that. The other one, I think if we do it, it should be a group thing, and we have to be very, 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 very careful on permissions.
So my question is to the group, do you feel that we, if we decide to do something with that picture and a name that we do a profession special permission slip for that and not just go off the emergency? That's what I think that the committee was kind of asking. So I just want to be sure that we all what we think would be best to protect ourselves and our students.
Well, I think a special permission slip would always be an extra layer of caution. And would be good. Yeah, just make sure that whatever is whatever is listed, if you look at 8330, I think it's eight, pretty sure it's 8330. There's a list of what we consider directory information that can be disseminated to parties interested is how it's phrased.
Okay. Yeah, I just, yeah, sounds good. So if we move forward, if they choose to move forward as a committee, we're going to have some permissions that before that type of information is presented out. Does someone agree with that? I don't think we have to have a motion. I just want to be sure I had the board's input.
Amy, that's how you read those two policies, right? When we discussed it, that's what.
Yes, I guess I have some interest in confirming with Neola that that makes good sense and goes along with the intention of the policy. I guess I have to read what the laws are that support those individual policies. But you said you looked at that already, Laura, you don't feel that that's in any way a FIPPA violation?
Yes, and I did take the snippet from the FIPPA law or whatever around student in it. So yeah, we are covered. We would be covered if we just looked at the emergency form, but I feel more secure if we give a permission slip special for this because it's different than they're getting a picture when they're walking down the hall in a club or something. This, I think, is their name and their picture. If we if we choose to publish something should have permission. I can send that to you guys. I'm sorry. It's weird on this. I only have one computer screen. So when you're on this, you can't have the other screen. So.
I would, I would, if I like the idea of a banner with several pictures and, you know, in a in a group setting, I really prefer that because it also adds that additional layer of safety in there. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I will definitely, we'll come back and then I can email or something you guys out if there's further questions. I I know that the the problem was we're getting into the middle of the May and just the timeline now. So it might be just easier with some icons of Holt and names and things on these banners, but trying to collect pictures and be sure you have everybody representative might be more challenging. So we'll go from there if that makes sense. Any other questions? Any other ideas that maybe weren't covered?
I just wanted to say that I think the idea of getting a permission slip for that is a good idea just from a communications standpoint. They might not know that we're doing this, like this this way that they would know that they they were going to be on a banner and they can go look for it. Otherwise, they might they might miss it. So I like the idea of doing some sort of electronic permission slip as well.
Okay, thank you guys for your input.
Vice President Coligan, I have a question about open houses for students. And I know that those aren't necessarily school sanctioned, but I am curious just as far as that being a norm and, you know, a lot of kids getting together in one place and doing something. I mean, was there discussion about about that at all? Again, it's not a school activity, but we know it takes place. Whether we expect that to occur.
I I know that there was some concern about even having a virtual prom. I, I know that there was some concern about even having a virtual prom if that would promote some kids in groups getting together, you know, even, you know, ten people at one person's house or whatever. There was no um, um, talk about um, open houses in general for this committee. I can bring that up with them. But I know having friends that have that, most are postponing and praying and hoping that this um, gets lifted so they can have some kind of celebration for their senior. But I don't think, I think everybody's in that holding pattern for now. Even Shutterfly is, um, if you printed your open house invitations and you have to postpone or cancel, they will reprint them for you for free. So I think that's where everybody's kind of going. But I will bring it up to them. I don't know, Dr. Hornak or President Perry. I, I don't know if we, I don't know where our position is on that. Around open houses, I just wondered as a district like um, trustee Bachan brought up about open houses. If we have any jurisdiction or how, how that should be handled.
I don't believe we have jurisdiction. I think at this point, we're still trying to model for the public that uh, there's a stay home, stay safe order in place. And uh, at that, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, we're going to be making the decisions with that as the umbrella. Um, and so yeah, the concern about having a virtual prom could be that some, some kids would find their way to each other's houses. And is that in honor uh, or does it violate that stay home, stay safe order?
It's been great to have um, student representation on that committee because they're willing to do polls and things to help bring that student voice. So I'm, I'm excited about that.
Trustee Coligan, um, did you come up with a realistic date at which, you know, there's like the point of no return of having an in-person graduation?
I know when we talked about Breslin with Mr. Willard, he was saying um, they were pretty open. And I know for some reason, May fifteenth stuck in my head from, that might be a date where some decisions were going to be made or the governor's um, message then. Um, Dr. Hornak may have a little more detail with that, but I, they didn't really have a hard cutoff date because it, it still felt so fluid. But um, Dr. Hornak might have more information.
As of right now, the weekend of June twenty-sixth to June twenty-eighth is when we want to have a graduation.
Thank you. I, I think um, what we were just trying to figure out, is there a date that we had to have a hard cutoff if we could move forward with it or not? So Isabella, are you feeling that weekend, either we'll have one in person or something virtual?
Um, I know we talked about if it wasn't that weekend in person, we would talk about having that same weekend virtual or moving graduation to the first week in August.
Okay. I thank you. I had to, that was the end of the meeting that I had to miss. So um, it sounds like they've, they've come on that hard date of that's when it would be, just knowing how or what it's going to look like is what's up in the air. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. So we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Perry. Uh, I just want everyone to know, we deeply miss our students, faculty and staff. We are receiving some positive feedback. Our curriculum office will be sharing some uh, feedback that they have received regarding our weekly surveys. Um, I also want to thank the finance subcommittee. Uh, the finance subcommittee met a week or so ago and did a really nice job um, helping uh, us with some assumptions that will be shared later. Again, uh, thank you for that. We have also, as an admin team, started uh, brainstorming around the CARES Act funds that will be coming. And at this point, it's still a major brainstorm uh, sessions. But things like technology, mental health, personal protect, uh, protective um, you know, equipment. Uh, you know, supporting our special ed students remediation. Those are some of the things that come to mind when uh, we think of the CARES Act dollars. And we are also, you know, trying to imagine a time when we can reopen. And so we're going to be uh, convening a small subgroup to, you know, dream, what does it look like to open in the fall as it, we normally would? What is a, you know, a staggered open? What is, you know, kind of a hybrid opening look like? And so I just, I'm trying to make visible to you, board and to the public that um, while we wish we could be in front of our students, and that's how we are best prepared to educate, unfortunately, due to social distancing protocols, we're not able to do that. To that end, a lot of conversations are continuing behind the scenes that are not visible. Okay, they're on Zoom, they're in small groups. Um, uh, you know, and, and what have you on the phone. Um, but a lot of work is continuing. I'd also like to give some special recognition to food service. They've served over ten thousand meals, distributed over third, uh, three thousand grocery packs and coordinated the distribution of nine hundred Weekend Survival Kits. We also have a three D print team. That three D print team has provided thirteen hundred, the number is different than what I published a week ago. Um, uh, face shield frames printed on our three D printers. And again, as you heard earlier, we have members of our public that are then donating to restock that filament. Um, we have posted thirty-five bedtime stories in an effort to keep some routine and um, Ms. Lopez is the star again tonight. She's done several of those. And then finally, uh, board, I would just like you to be aware that uh, we have convened the Holt Diamonddale, Delhi Township Community Task Force, and we have met for the nine, uh, the past nine weeks. And we'll meet again this week for our tenth consecutive week. And that's made up of school, government, police, fire, food bank, religious and business leaders across Holt Diamonddale and Delhi Township. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Uh, board, I have a couple things to uh, go over with you. Um, like Dr. Hornak had mentioned, the finance committee met last week. Um, and overall, our goal was to really maximize um, the current fiscal year surplus or anticipated surplus. Knowing that we're going to go into the next couple of years with some budget cuts. Um, and so we want to carry over as much surplus in the current year as what we can. We also looked at future years because we do know that this is not going to just impact one particular year that this is going to last a couple of years. And if we spent down that fund balance, you know, what would that look like and how can we recover from it? Um, so later in the agenda, we'll go over those details. And then lastly, I, I just want to thank that two thousand twenty graduation committee. Um, we're trying to keep as much of the two thousand graduation um, as normal as what it possibly could be. And for Mr. Willard for getting that communication out to the public last week on what that graduation might look like. So with that, we'll move to curriculum.
Steve here somewhere. Hey buddy, you want to do?
Sure, I can start. Good evening. Um, so I'd like to provide just a quick update. Um, and we started the first week with a survey that we provided to our parents. Um, the survey is chunked into uh, each day. So for example, pre-K two is on Monday. Three, four is on Tuesday. Wednesday is five, six. Seven, eight is on Thursday and Friday is the high school. And it is uh, six questions. Um, and the questions are, are very brief and we do it through a phone call. Um, and you should have a copy in your packet. And Christine and I worked on ways to um, utilize the phone service to provide uh, the greatest opportunity for parents to respond. We um, have been receiving some feedback in the um, superintendent's office. I've received feedback from teachers that they've got from uh, community members or building principals of ways to continue to adjust the survey to increase participation. Um, but overall, you have week one results um, lumped by uh, the district. And I also have week two uh, summary in front of me that we will share with you as well. But um, some overall themes I just kind of wanted to share with you from the surveys is uh, participation. Um, we had more participants uh, week one than week two. And so we discussed a little bit about maybe the why behind that. Um, overall, if you look through the summary of the responses, um, I believe that um, our public is having an overall positive experience with the remote learning. Um, we have focused a lot on question one. Um, and I'll explain to you what a lot means, but um, making sure that students and teachers, um, there's a feeling of connection. Um, and overall, we've had ninety percent or higher um, from both weeks. Our public has said, yes, I feel like uh, the teacher is connecting. And this was one of the big goals that we had. So some of the ways we're using the results, and I really want to compliment the building principals and the teachers for looking at their results and making some um, conclusions and action steps. And the building principals get the results. We discuss them at our individual meetings. Uh, they have conversations with their classroom teachers. They cross-reference their monitoring logs. Um, so a lot of dialogue is happening at the building level, um, as well as the district um, with the results. So I just didn't know if there's any general questions the board had with what the survey results were or any, anything that they've heard as far as suggestions moving forward.
Steve, I just wanted to mention, I have two students in the district in two different grades, and we've never received a single call. So when you look at that response rate, you might want to just confirm to make sure, like we get snow day calls and stuff. So I don't know what the, what the thing is, but I just wonder how many people are not being reached. So something to visit.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for being proactive to collect this data. This being new for us, this can really help guide our, you know, practice in the future. So I really appreciate you guys doing this ahead of time. The only thing that I think that I had from a couple of parents was the call comes in at the same time on the same day. And so if they are at work or so, they can't get us. They, they miss it. And there's no way to call back that number. And I'm not sure what the technology you guys are using, but I mean, it's not, I think it's um, great opportunity to get feedback from our community. So I thank you for that. But those are just some minor things that it could be tweaked. And if not, you know, that is what it is.
And, and that's good feedback, Ms. Coligan. And Christine and I connect usually at the end of each week. We talk about some of the feedback we received and the barriers. And she's doing an amazing job of digging in the system and figuring out ways to get around it. But there's some, there's some parameters right now that we're struggling to get around. So I agree.
And just one other thing, Dr. Hornak, could we share this data? Because we might get more parents if they know that their, that their voice is being heard or, you know, on that aspect. If you can put that maybe in the peak of the week.
It's a nice suggestion.
With the links there, the times that they come in. So they might be looking for it. Cause like, of what um, trustee Dalton was sharing that she didn't get it. Maybe we have others that aren't getting it. So I just think that whenever we get surveyed or if we get, the more we can share that out, more people will probably choose to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, it will be interesting, Steve. Um, as you see the trends week by week of, of people accepting the call less if they kind of feel like, well, I've already answered these questions. Um, and, and I, I think the key, because I have been getting the calls and I get them back to back for the, for, you know, Jack and Clara that are in, you know, third and, and first grade. But we may want to look at if you're seeing that and you have questions that uh, the response is pretty consistent and pretty heavy, like question five about the amount of time provided for office hours. If that's one that after a while isn't telling us anything, just take it out. Like if we do anything to shorten the call in terms of seconds, you know, I, that could get it to increase. I mean, you might find that um, obviously you're going to have to ask what school they're part of. So that's one. But you may, you may end up just limiting this down to three questions just to get the turnout high. If, if some of them just aren't giving us a lot of information, but it works, it worked fairly well.
Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions or inputs? Just you want to share?
Christine, I just want to say, uh, trustee Dalton, I will look into um, why you are not getting the phone calls. And then I'll report back to you.
All right. Are we good with Steve's part? Um, so I apologize that I didn't get this presentation. It's short, uh, presentation on the couple of things I was going to share with you tonight. As I went over my notes last night, um, the mental fatigue I feel after being on a computer all day is different than my normal mental fatigue. And I don't know if you guys are experiencing that as well. But as I was going over what I want to share, I was afraid I would forget something to share with you if I didn't have it documented here. So um, everything referenced here is in your board packet, and there are page numbers that you can look at. Um, so I apologize, I didn't get you this verbatim ahead of time. Um, I did want to let you guys know that we surveyed staff as well, um, just an informal Google form uh, with like, I think four or five questions about kind of how they're doing. Do they feel like we're communicating well enough? Um, do they have any concerns? Um, they need support from building administration or central ops administration, um, technology, power school. And then there was a comment section. So um, it went to about eight hundred staff members. It was not specific to teachers, uh, but all staff members. And we had a hundred and forty-three responses. Um, most of which were teachers based on their comments that they'd left. Uh, so keep in mind, as with all survey data, it was not a random sample. Um, we would not use this necessarily to make overarching decisions about our success right now. Um, but it does give us feedback from those that participated. Uh, I was concerned about technology and if people felt supported with technology and of those who took it. Um, a large majority were in a good spot with it. Um, the other thirty percent said they were feeling okay. Um, there were very few who said they were really struggling. Um, that most of them felt like the district was communicating satisfactorily. Uh, there was some interest at this point in learning more about special education and at-risk supports. Uh, we got feedback from them on how we might do power school training now that our in-person training is canceled. Uh, and then there were spots for specific feedback. So I wanted you to know that in addition to surveying our community, we also are making sure we get feedback from staff. Any questions on that? Um, so the, uh, I, one of the items on my list for you tonight, and this does require um, uh, board action is the adoption of um, OpenSciEd as our sixth through eighth grade science curriculum. Um, so let me kind of walk through this with you. Um, you've seen some of this material before. Uh, OpenSciEd is one of the programs that we piloted. So we've been working with this program for two years. Um, just to remind you that we've been in the process of adopting science curriculum since two thousand seventeen. Uh, you may remember last spring, we adopted Amplify Science K five, which I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from um, teachers and students about that program. It's very hands-on. Uh, we also last spring adopted physical sciences, of course, at the high school. We've been sending teachers to um, NGSX training, which is an exemplar training every um, year to Inham ISD. Rob Stevenson runs those and they're fabulous trainings. So we're kind of, you know, up to our eyeballs in the science adoption. Um, it's a slower adoption as um, companies uh, evolve their programming to reflect the next gen standards. We're finding curriculums that we feel like really fit um, the goals of our district as well as the next gen standard. So at this point in this timeline, um, I'll be asking you guys to approve our six, eight curriculum and scope and sequence. I'll talk to you about that in a minute. Um, just knowing that this approval um, will be a two to three year process. Um, we have some kits and some materials purchased through the pilot, but it will be another year or two before all of the materials are released completely. Um, so the next generation science standards, just to remind you, there are different components. They're not uh, what you might be used to with standards where you get a list of things kids need to know and be able to do. Um, instead, they have bundled them uh, into performance expectations around life science and physical science. Um, in each performance expectation has underneath it some science engineering, disciplinary ideas and concepts that cut across um, all courses. So to give you kind of a visual of what that looks like, the state of Michigan adopted science standards that clumped sixth through eighth grade in a big pot. So we didn't have a lot of guidance on what sixth, seventh and eighth had to look like. So as a part of the adoption for you all, it's not just approving the OpenSciEd curriculum, but it's also saying, yes, this is the order we want to teach the standards, um, which will then impact our report cards um, and just overall scope and sequence of science programming. Uh, the OpenSciEd curriculum. The OpenSciEd curriculum, our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers have been working together over the last several years to try out, I think they've tried four different programs. And we do have their feedback in the actual application that was sent to us, a Word document. But for the most part, they have found OpenSciEd to be the most aligned with the next-generation science standards, meaning that it's a process that evolves around an anchor phenomenon that leads kids to process through questioning and investigating, drawing models and revising knowledge as they gain information, and then constructing explanations based on what they've seen. Included in the board packet is a sample unit. I believe that the sample unit is 6.2 is what it would be highlighted as. Yeah, 6.2 thermal energy. And usually for a unit in OpenSciEd, you'll start with some sort of phenomenon. When I did the training at the ISD, it was a tanker, a train tanker, and they steam cleaned the inside, sealed up the lid. And then as you're watching the video of this tanker getting cleaned out, it implodes. So this giant tanker implodes. And then as students in Rob Stevenson's classroom, we start talking about why did that happen? So every unit in the OpenSciEd curriculum starts with a phenomenon like that. Some of them are videos like that, because it's hard to, you know, steam out a tanker in a classroom. But some of them are things like carrying around a tray of something that has a strong smell, lemon juice or something, and then asking kids, what do you notice? And they start to talk about why is it that you can smell the lemon juice when you're closer and that it goes away over time? So that anchor phenomenon is something that OpenSciEd has pretty genuine, authentic examples of. It also has a good flow of narrative for kids to build on their learning and have it be cumulative over time. And that it's kind of the idea that it's progressive, that the class moves together to solve their problems and understand what's going on by using evidence. Couple other highlights, and there's pages. So if you're looking at your board packet, you can read more in-depth on each of those. Like I said, the commitment to the next-gen science standards philosophy. Also, one of the most commendable commitments to equity and access I've ever seen written in a document. Page 170 of your board packet has several pages. They went out of their way to include in the development of this program people with different perspectives, backgrounds. They talk about disenfranchised groups and ensuring that all student groups have access to the knowledge through this constructing and inquiry process. So that was, if you haven't had a chance to read that, I found that to be very positive for this program. And then also, it has a whole bunch of different ways that it can be adapted to serve student levels and interests. So overall, the program was the most robust that we've looked at. Side note, even prior to remote learning, several teachers were using it embedded within Google Classroom and find that the, while ideally doing science together is best to talk through and raise questions and really process together, the experiments and the phenomenon do lend themselves to students being able to watch or explore that thinking and do some work through a digital learning platform. So again, not ideal, but it does work. And then we do plan on continuing PD with Rob Stevenson at the ISD as the training for the program. Do you have any questions about OpenSciEd or sixth through eighth grade science? And like, yeah, I was going to ask a teacher to come and do some science with you, and we adopted, but this whole closure has kind of put the damper on that plan. I think that was Amy. Hi, Amy.
Hey. I was just going to ask if you could upload this presentation of yours to SharePoint just so that we could see it in a little more detail if we want to review back to it.
Absolutely. And again, I'm sorry I didn't get it to you ahead of time.
Oh, no worries. Thank you.
And if there's any other information that you want for science, let me know. I also want to let you guys know, I think this is the last thing on my list, that we are in the process of doing a district device analysis. So we do have someone who keeps track of our assets and manages our number of working devices. But obviously, where we're at right now with remote learning, we want to have some plans for how we might get to a place where students can borrow Chromebooks or devices as needed. I'm sure some of you may be aware, the deployment process for getting Chromebooks in the hands of families was a really big process. And through that process, we have shared about 1,300 of our Chromebooks with our district, with our families. So at this point, thinking ahead, not knowing what the future might hold for our district, having to think about how many devices do we purchase? How many do we have left in the building? How many of those we loaned out will come back and still be usable? We do have some title money, and we'll have some grant money that we can use to purchase devices. We have our tech budget every year that we look at for purchasing devices. So we're trying to be strategic and get to a place where we can start talking with you and with our teachers about having these available all the time for kids and not just as checking out a Chrome cart when a teacher has a test or wants to do something online. So the good news is this is moving, and the technology teacher leaders in tech department are working together with me to try to figure that out. The bad news is, what was shared with me at our last meeting is we're looking at a three- to five-month backorder of Chromebooks right now. So even if we do decide this is the number we want, we put our order in. You know, as with everything else, we're looking at a Plan B, C, and D for the use of devices.
I don't need to go back, but before we go anywhere, should we have made a motion to adopt that science curriculum?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Or is this the first month, and we're going to do it next month?
I do not believe it takes a first and second reading. So you can vote tonight if you'd like.
Was that your plan, Jessica? That's I'm just trying to be sure.
Yep, the agenda has that this requires board action.
Okay. I can't keep all my screens and all those things in there. So can I go ahead and make a motion? Or I just don't want us to keep going if we're supposed to make a motion on that curriculum.
Can I just, this is Kim Cosgrove. I would just want the amount of money to be in there too. So if the proposal could have the gross payment that will be made for that, that'll make the auditors happy.
And I do have that I can share that with you. It's a little tricky in that it's over a three-year period. There won't be a one-month sum that we pay for the whole thing. We've bought several units already this year, but Kim, I can send you that whole spreadsheet.
I think, Christine, if you say that the purchase will be over a three-year period of time, do you know what that gross number is so the board can approve that?
My understanding is that they would be approving the standards in the curriculum, and then the dollar amounts would get approved separately as a part of the budget when they're budgeted. They're a part of the curriculum office budget. So as they approve our budget, I thought it just got approved through that.
No, this is a purchase greater than $24,000.
Okay.
That would be approved by the Board of Ed.
All right, then I can send that spreadsheet separately. If you think that that means we should wait till next month, I'm okay with that. I mean, not much's changing right now anyways.
Jessica, let's hold off on that so that you have an accurate number. At least you can give us a figure.
Sure. I have it done. I just didn't think that I needed to include it. All right, that's all I had to share then. And we'll look forward to next month for a science adoption.
Back to the Chromebooks. Does it make sense to put it in order? And with the demand that high, would they let us out of that order if we decided to change it?
It's a good question. Chances are, the number we put in is the number we will need. The number that we need is pretty high. So I don't imagine wanting to backtrack and reduce the number. I think we're just trying to figure out what to spend, what to use title money on, what to use grant money on, and what to use through the tech refresh. So I'm hoping we can put orders in soon.
What can we put in? I just, I feel like I'm with President Perry. If we can put in even a half of that for now or whatever, because three to five months might become six to nine, who knows with this? So I just think, and I know you guys are trying to be that, but the most proactive. And I know our budgets are up in the air now too, but I just feel the more proactive we can be.
I think we're about a day or two away from being pretty solid on our title funds and what we have remaining. And that could be the first round of order once we kind of connect all the dots. But I think we're pretty close to making the first wave of purchases, knowing that that amount won't even cover what we deploy or what we need to get, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Jessica, you had junior high course guide update.
Yeah, I forgot about the course guide. All right, so, sorry about that. So the junior highs, I told you, end of day, computer fatigue is real. So the junior high has, in reflection on what I shared with you in February, originally, the intention was to shift some of the courses to nine-week courses in order to give kids more options. Unfortunately, with the closure of school, teacher teams have had to channel all their energy into learning how to teach remotely and have not been able to redesign their courses in order to respond to that. So for this coming school year, we're going back to the four-and-a-half credits of required and one-and-a-half required elective for seventh grade. But there is an attempt to still offer some flexibility. So we're going to merge keyboarding into computers and create one course with it and then open it up to seventh and eighth graders. There's also three other electives, global travels, dramatic speech, and one other that before were only available to seventh grade that we're looking to open up to seventh and eighth grade. So trying to keep that spirit of more options for kids while also recognizing that it's really hard to rethink courses right now. So the document was shared with you in the board packet, but I just wanted you to know, as course requests go out to families soon, that we're really kind of just going back to what was typical other than keyboarding being a part of computers. And now health and PE are the nine-week courses that pair up with each other. So that change did stay. Sorry. Any questions about junior high? All right, sorry about that.
Thanks, Jess. President Perry, I think you're on mute.
I should just stop playing with that button. Next on the agenda, Mr. Brown with the facilities updates on the projects and budgets.
Yes. Board of Education has previously approved two large facility projects due to the unprecedented times in the economy and the assumption that the state of Michigan will need to cut upcoming budgets of school districts. I've scaled back my projects to critical replacements only. I've taken the large asphalt project that you approved a couple of weeks ago and scaled that down to $100,000. That'll be skim coating Washington Woods' main lot and the south lot at the junior high. It will not be the same as doing it fully, but it'll get us a couple of years to where the drive, that'll be drivable, excuse me. The roofing, we had several projects. The main one was the high school auditorium, and that's the one that really needs done. And we're going to go with that for $141,200. And then Horizon and Wilcox need some repairs where they're having some major leaks. And that'll be $18,910 for a total of $160,011. I did want to say that that'd be a reduction of $448,693 from what was approved. My professional opinion on all the projects were previously brought to the Board of Education remain critical during these unprecedented times. The need to recess all expenses is imperative, and I do understand that.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Rick. I know that while you support this recommendation, I don't know. I appreciate your honesty with your comments. You don't necessarily agree with it all, but that these are times where there's going to be some shared sacrifice. And so I understand that these are critical, but support your recommendation here to reduce the spend amounts. President Perry, do you need an amended motion for these reduced amounts?
I don't think we do, because we approved a higher dollar amount, so.
It's just for informational purposes that he's bringing it down. That's what I assumed.
And I share Mr. Bakken's sentiment as well. It's, I know it's difficult to patch something when it really needs to be repaired, but just given where we're at and, you know, the times we're in, I appreciate you reducing this.
Sure, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the S. All right, we'll move to the SRO report. Dr. Hornak, I don't think Deputy Bellinger's with us this evening. Is there anything? I mean, this is the best report I think I've seen.
I'm here, President Perry.
Oh, you are.
And yes, it was a very busy month. So, yeah, 11 calls for service. I've made it out to eight different schools, 4.7 hours of community policing and two hours in training. And a lot of that has to do with, the sheriffs had all of us in the community policing office on kind of rotating schedules. So I only worked part of the month of April. I was going to touch quick on the signs. I know that was a big deal. I was actually, that was one of my weeks that I was not in the office, working from home. But my coworkers went out and, I think, a good partnership and went out and knocked on lots of doors. I'm told they went through almost a whole neighborhood and plus some knocking on doors, talking to people, and I think definitely a positive result. I was happy to see when I was back to work last week that I think there's at least double the signs than the week before, two weeks before, when I last was out at the high school and seen all the signs out there. So overall, I think that was a positive outcome. And yeah, that's all I got, short and sweet this month, unless there's any questions.
For all you do, I just wanted to have, as, not just in our schools, but in our communities, has there been an uptick in, I'm going to call them petty crimes, like into cars or, you know, in neighborhoods?
So this time of year, I mean, we always do see kind of an uptick in the LFA larceny from autos just because the warmer weather. So people are getting out and getting into the cars more. I don't know that it is necessarily attributed to the kids being out of school or even that there's any reason to believe that the kids are doing it. I think it's just that time of year. And so, I mean, we always remind people, make sure you lock your doors. And if you leave your car in the driveway especially, because, you know, all they're doing is they're checking door handles. Very rarely are we seeing smash and grabs or the prying doors open. They're just checking your handles. And if they're unlocked, they're taking the opportunity to go in there and get what they want. Now with the actual, like, breaking into houses and things like that, we've actually, from what I understand, seen a downtick in that. I think that's just attributed to more people are home. So the bad guys aren't being as brazen, and they know people are watching them. So they're not going and doing the daytime burglaries and things like that.
How about domestic violence or mental health calls?
Oh, yeah, so that's definitely up. You know, my experience on day shift is that we don't really respond to a lot of domestic violence calls. And those calls for service that I listed on my report this month, most of those were domestic assault or some sort of family dispute. I think when I was working, I mean, at least one a day, sometimes two, which is definitely, from my experience on day shift, high for day shift. I don't know that the night shift is responding to anymore, but.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just was wondering, because it was always this time of year where Horizon would be broken into just because of its location. So it makes me feel better that you think it's just people breaking into car or getting into cars that were left unlocked, so, thank you.
Yes, that's the most of it. You know, and we do what we can to be out in the neighborhoods and patrol, you know, any suspicious behavior and stuff. We try to have contact with those people. And but unfortunately, we can't catch them all. So that's why we just always... So that's why we just always give that recommendation. Make sure you leave your doors locked. Thank you.
President Perry, before we move on, were we supposed to vote on the junior high manual like we do the high school? Or was this our first read?
Since there weren't changes to the curriculum, we don't usually vote mid-year. I mean, if you guys wanted to vote on it, you could.
So when do we normally vote, Jessica? I'm sorry.
Sorry. My understanding, what, because we'd make kind of updates throughout the year based on like if there's spelling errors or a teacher gets hired with different certification. And usually we just bring it to you in January or February for a yearly approval of all the changes and looking ahead. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't vote to approve the changes that just happened as kind of like undoing what we were going to do in February. I don't really know, honestly.
And are those the things that are in yellow in it that were just possible changes?
Right, so in your board packet, those are the changes, yeah.
I just want to be sure. So hard reading it on Apple phone, but I don't know if Gary or Julie, do we have, is this now we do that or is it in January? I just remember we usually.
Yeah, you only have. I'm unmuted, yes. You only have three changes, Jessica, that were outlined there.
Yes.
Page, oh, what page is that? See it now, shoot. My phone's not telling me. The academic programming page, it starts with, trying to see what page number it is. Like 200 and something, sorry.
Big board packet tonight.
Yeah.
I like to blame finance for that, but I'm pretty sure it was awful, also my fault.
When I was good having the science stuff in there too. I think we should go ahead and approve the changes because I think it'd be silly to go back to June. But Julie, what is your thought?
You're muted, Julie.
Can you unmute Julie? We can't hear you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, um. We are, I thought we already did in, normally if it's like a small change and not a large curriculum one, we in the past, we've never had to do it. This was, I think, just moving two classes to nine weeks since as opposed to which, when we voted on it originally, we knew that that was the potential for more.
If you feel more comfortable, we can vote on it. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to be in disagreement. These are all minor changes.
They are. I didn't realize when we brought it before that we had. So first off, we're fine. I'm, I apologize. It's just this on this platform or everything, I just didn't want to mess up stuff, so.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, make a motion to make the changes to the whole junior high 2020, 21 curriculum manual. Is that what it's called? I'm sorry.
Course guys.
Scope and sequence. Course guide, yes, thank you, course guide.
I'll support.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Now it's official.
All right, we'll move to the HR report. And Pete, if you're on, if you could update us.
I'll take it, President Perry. We had one more retirement come in from a long standing bus driver. She will be deeply missed. She is a member of the leadership team and someone who has served us very, very well over the years. On that note, we are still working to determine how to celebrate our 2020 retirees and those who are resigning. We still don't have a real good plan yet. Generally speaking, that would happen in May. And as the stay home, stay safe order continues to be extended, we keep having to change that date. So, short and sweet on the HR report.
Okay, thank you. Next on financial matters, Ms. Kasgro.
Yep, thank you very much. I have shared on my screen and I have decided at this board meeting that I am going to share as you see in your packet. So when we talk about, as you can see, the page number, and then we'll be able to discuss and be looking at the very same things. And this is your monthly financial packet is under 8.1. And actually, I was kind of surprised when we put all the numbers together. As you can see, the percentage of expenses unused percent is the same as it was in previous year. And actually, I went back two years and we're all the same. April was still a cleanup month. There were things coming from March. The checks runs that we have on Tuesday are getting smaller each time, but we still have to pay for gas and electric and phone bills and trash and all of those types of things. So it is holding where it is, and I can see that our check runs are getting smaller. So unless you had questions on that, I wouldn't have anything else.
I just have a question. You know, you say those numbers are the same, but we anticipated a bigger surplus in the end. And maybe you just mentioned it with those check runs getting smaller. But it just seems like here's April and we've only got a couple of months left. So is it still feasible that we're going to eke out a larger surplus than what's the last?
Yeah.
Prove.
Yeah, and so just so that my understanding is what you're saying is we had originally budgeted revenues greater than expenditures of 357,000. And what I think you just asked me, now that we know we have reduced revenues coming in, but we also know that we will have reduced expenditures. So will this number grow? Will it be greater than 350? And I had just actually submitted all the budget adjustments for the 1920, getting ready for the June meeting. And just a little factoid, we have three weeks until we send you the next board packet. And so we were moving along with that. I do have to say that I had reduced the MSU Breslin payment in the graduation expense and reduced that. So I'll update that and put some of that money back in. I think that you had some good thoughts. But at this point in time, that number is approaching $900,000 by removing all the expenditures that I can visibly see know that won't change from the district's budget. I have not removed any budgets from departments other than facilities, and we've talked through that with Rick Brown from this current year. So I may see that in HR, they are going to not spend $20,000. But I did not remove that yet when you get your budget update because it's not the district budget. It's a departmental budget. Did that answer the question?
I think so. It's just those percentages I thought would be down a little bit.
That does show the power of payroll in our budget. So, you know, we continue to pay everyone. And actually, we probably pay people more now because we would have people that are on the payroll that don't work and don't have any more sick time, but we are paying them their contracted time. So in some instances, we pay people their contracted time where they weren't getting that because they were taking time off that they didn't have leave balances for. So that is the power of the total. You're paying all the insurances and you're paying all of their payroll too, which is 80 to 85% of the budget.
And did I hear you say that you think that 357 could approach 900?
I believe that when I get, when I do a budget update in June for you and we adopt that, it will be closing in on $900,000. And then what would happen is all of the department budgets, when we close the June 30th, that will push that number up over, I believe, a million dollars.
Thank you.
Here is the weekly amounts, as you can see them on the cash flow statement. And these numbers here under non-payroll invoices are becoming smaller. You will always have large amounts in here because we have to pay the retirement system, which is in here. And we also pay the insurance bills. So there are large bills that will always flow through those. But these numbers are becoming smaller. And I didn't have anything else unless you had questions on the monthly financial packet.
Nothing else.
The next section that I had is 8.2, the debt fund. And if you remember, we usually do see the debt fund twice a year. So the last time you saw the debt fund and this original budget was in June, was in May of 2019. And what it was is it had all of the payments that were scheduled under the bond issues that we had at that point. And we always most use the property taxes that we have this year, some speculative school bond interest. And we knew that this was the first year that we would enter repayment of the school bond loan fund. And that was our original budget. This now final 2019, 20 budget that I will ask for your approval has the most accurate updated taxable values in it that we have from the counties, apply the 10 mills. And that is what we have. This, the majority of the 10,000 is interest income for the year. And then if you remember, in July, August of 2019, the district refunded their bonds, the largest bonds they had. They were originally issued in the year 2000. And they had been refinanced. This was the last refinanced. We rolled out of the swap bonds and we made that a term bond. In doing that, you'll see the proceeds, but you also have to pay off the old bonds. And you also had your bond issuance costs, which was the payoff of that final swap amount. Your redemption of principles went down because of the refinanced, along with the interest on the debt. And so that is the majority of the thrust of where we are with this budget update. And unless you had questions, I would ask for the approval of the updated budget for the 1920 school year.
Make a motion to approve the revision to the, make it a final budget for the 1920 school year for the retirement fund.
I have a second.
I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The next sheet is just for your information. It is the final budget that you just approved, and it has the transactions through April. I do want you to know that in this school year, starting in November of 2019, we started with any excess funds that was in the debt fund. We paid back the school bond loan fund. The first payment, I believe, was $148,000. And in March, after the majority of the collection of property taxes, we paid another 1.1 million. And as of today, we released another 428 in funds to the school bond loan loan fund. Once we collect our delinquent taxes from the county, Eaton and Ingham, we will make sure that we have enough money to pay the November interest payments. Because if you remember bond payments, the interest is paid in November and then principal and interest is paid in May. We will be over $2 million that we repaid for them. So that's just an update of where we are. The next item that I would ask you is the proposed 2021. And this really is a compliance budget. Because I originally in the budget had a little bit of 1% increase, but because of COVID and the close down, and I'm not sure, it's just a recognition of we don't know where the property tax values of whole public schools will be going at this point in time. So I left that in total. We won't have a refinance. We'll have a little bit of interest. But as of next year, this is the remaining portion that needs to be paid off of the school bond loan fund for next year. These are the obligated debt principal and interest payments for next year.
So that million 290 plus the 50 is the balance to pay off of that?
Yes, and of course, that would be the estimate. There's lots of zeros behind that because we don't know what the interest rate, yep. But by paying up early this year, I was trying to limit as much interest as we could.
You need a motion on the proposed 2021 budget, Kim?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion for the proposed 2020, 21 budget for the retirement fund.
I have a second. Was that you, trustee Colgan?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. So the next presentation is the budget for 2021 preliminary assumptions. We do this every May. We look at the assumptions that we are using to complete the budget that you will be asked to approve in June. Because you remember that the state of Michigan requires that school districts approve their budget before their year starts. And of course, ours starts in July 1st. I wanted to say before we start this that all of the items, the majority of the revenues are assumptions, especially when they come from the per pupil allocation from the state of Michigan. We have had some information that has come from the state superintendent Rice, Michael Rice. He is our state superintendent. And also Representative or Senator Shirkey, he has released some statements or made some comments. And then we've had some somewhat listening to discussions that are going on with the Michigan School Business Officials and Treasury and economics. And actually, there is a University of Michigan revenue projections that came out also. And so we are trying to put all of those together. This Friday, the 15th, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, is the Michigan Revenue Consensus Conference. It brings all three state branches of government together, and they try to form what their budget is going to be or what the boundaries, what revenues and expenditures will be for the upcoming year. And so I say that, and I will mention that a couple of times if you have questions of why you did this. As Mr. Perry and Dr. Horneck had said, we had met with the Finance Committee and reviewed them. We had made changes. And a lot of these are areas that are being discussed or they are informational purposes. A cut hasn't been made, but it's informing you of what amounts cost us in the district. So I really just talked about the revenue assumptions. I want you to know that in these revenue assumptions that you will see a projection, we are only dealing with the per pupil allocation in the state. So we're only dealing in the revenue side with the student count and the per pupil funding. We haven't done community education. We haven't done federal grants to make this as simple as possible as we go through here. So the first one that we know and we control, you've seen this this sheet. What this does is the enrollment projection. It is taking your last one, two, three, four, five, six years of revenues. And what it does is it makes a retention ratio. So how many students have you reached? So how many students have you retained from kindergarten to first grade, from first grade to second grade? And it makes a ratio and it applies that to give you a predictor of what you will have in the upcoming school year. So the blue line is the 1920, you will see that. And this yellow line is the projection of the 2021. It would be only one piece that we would use. I have to tell you that pupil accounting has lots of documents along with curriculum. So in this, you know that in total, on the blue line in the year 1920, we increased students net of 93 students. The majority and the thrust of that increase was shared time. That's what the ST means, shared time students. Those are non-public students that go to non-public schools. And those teachers that teach in those non-public schools are employed by whole public schools, a portion of their time. The other portion is by the non-public schools. So that thrust is there, that's what thrusted that up. So that is, we do know that those non-pubs, I believe that we had seven non-public schools. Three of them are, we are parting ways with. And so the majority of the revenue that was, actually all of the revenue that was generated by 178 was put into our infrastructure. It could have been one-time funds. We treated it like one-time funds. We didn't make it operational. We didn't put it into salary. We put it into infrastructure and facilities. And we believe that we will only have four of those non-pubs last year, next year. And that will go down to 58. They'll have corresponding expenses that get reduced also. So that is 120 of, as you can see, the total 202. This is generating. You can also see down here that we have taken down the developmental kindergarten. And we've also taken down kindergarten to some extent. That is a hard number that I just put in there. So not only do we believe that, we know, actually, I should say, that we will reduce from the roll up. We have cohorts in several buildings in fourth grade that have four fourth grade classrooms that will go down to three. Just as that bubble moves through this district. And so we know that we will lose some there. So as we walk through the finance committee, there was some discussion that how will the COVID virus affect parents wanting to send their children to kindergarten? Or any of these grades here? Some at high school may say, I'm learning, yeah.
So going back to the 178 and we're parting ways. Can you give me a little more information about that? This is the first I'm hearing this. So the contracts you made last year, really at four schools? Could you just give more information? I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
So you would not have heard about this before because it is just occurring within the last two weeks. We had contracted with a school finance resource. It's called School Resource Finance. And they brought those non-public schools to us. And at this point in time, we are parting ways with that School Resource Finance. Some of that is coming through because what other intermediate school districts, how they count non-public schools. Our intermediate school district does not count them that way. And so it is not feasible for those kids to be part of our non-public school service through the Ingham Intermediate School District. I know that Dr. Horneck has talked with both of them. If there are more conversations or did you have more to add, Dr. Horneck?
Um, no. The long and the short of it is, there is some more detail that I have added into the superintendent's report. But the gist of it is that it's called School Financial Solutions. Is they're moving away from whole public for some things that are out of our control. And they're taking three to four of the schools with them.
Thank you, I just didn't know that. I just, because I thought that that was a positive process at the beginning of this and we were hopeful. And so I've just wondered where, what had happened. And it just looks like circumstances of the systems have happened, so thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we're looking at 202 here. But you will see on the next sheet that we have made that assumption coming out of the finance committee of 250. And at this point in time, it's, except for the 120 of the non-pubs, there are lots of assumptions that we need to make. This next spreadsheet that you are looking at has many, we have seen this over and over. Actually, we saw it in our April Board of Education meeting. What now has been updated is we are, we have said per pupil funding from the state of Michigan, we're going to have three scenarios. Will it reduce 500? Will it reduce 650? Or will it reduce 800? Somebody could say that at the last April meeting, the low number here was 350. And so there has been some more discussion from the state of Michigan that it could be higher. And actually, the highest we've heard is $1,000. So what we did was you take out the lowest and you take out the highest. And you, we've done three scenarios that are in the middle of that high-low range. Here, what we have also done is we are multiplying the reduction of the per pupil from the state of Michigan. And we're also looking at, what if we reduce 150 kids? What if we reduce 350 kids? And then, yes?
Two, 250, you said 350, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I wonder what I was looking at, yeah, 250, thank you very much. In the reduction of $650 per pupil at the state, we looked at 150 reduction, 200 and 250. And then, of course, 800 per pupil and reducing 150 and 250. And so when we got to what would be the general, I mean, and knowing, don't want to be too conservative. You don't want to not do enough at this point in time. And knowing that in this Friday, we're going to have the May Revenue Consensus Conference. At this point in time, we built in the middle. And I have reduced us $5 million. So when we go forward and we look, we're looking at these numbers here in the middle. So remember, we reduced, we took out the highest that we've heard of a $1,000 cut. We've taken out the lowest that we've heard. We went to the middle and then we kind of homogenized it and went to the middle again. So at this point in time, as we go forward and look at the speculative budgets, we're looking at about $650 per pupil cut and reducing 250. So when we go on and we look at the speculative budget, we'll look at the assumptions that we're looking for revenues, the cuts that we believe that we may have to start making a three-year speculative. And then we'll just look at what we're going to do at the June board meeting. In enrollment and the state funding, I'm just documenting what I just went over at the last slide. In the staffing assumptions, we have had three teacher retirements. We've had five resignations and we're not hiring. Now, we had five resignations, but we have open positions because of leaves of absences right now. We have two of them. We have long-term subs in those. And so you would assume that you would, because you have a resignation, there are no new hires, you're going to try to use your existing staff. But really, those savings came in this year because we didn't, we weren't paying them while they were on their leave, after they exhausted their leave time balances. And we're using a long-term sub. So some of those savings were there. And support staff, we are under review of those, of the retaining of those that have left. And do we make no new hires or do we replace the staff we have? We're contract, we are in contract negotiating with all five units at this point in time. Peter Trezis and I have been, and the departments have been negotiating with the Teamsters, which are the bus drivers and the custodians. And that's active, we're meeting twice a week on those. The retirement rate at the state of Michigan currently, as it was issued before COVID, went from 27.5 this year to 28.21. So just to say that a different way, for every dollar that we pay in salary, we pay back to the state of Michigan 27 cents this year, 27 and a half. Next year, for every dollar we pay in wages, we will pay 28.20, 28 cents back to state of Michigan. That will increase. I took exactly the amount of wages that we have for this current year, multiplied the difference, we will be adding $225,000 to our current expenses. The Michigan State Hard Cap for insurances. If you remember, our legislators put a cap on how much the school districts can pay. That went up 3.3%. I applied that to the premiums that we have in this current, or the hard cap that we have with the premiums that we pay, came up with an increase of $150,000. Transportation, I believe that I had said that our last board meeting, that the transfer, the grant that we had for 25, that was not open. It is a consortium collaborative purchase. And we will not get those buses in this current year. Those will go to next year. So you will have a significant savings this year that budget would go for next year. You have senior fleet and the age. At this point in time, we are not expecting to reduce the purchase of those buses. Facilities, we will look at the reductions coming up. Support budgets have had a 10% reduction. We are in the process. So all of your administrators had hit the due dates for turning their budgets in for the 2021. And that was before the COVID hit or right about the same time. And so as those are here, I am taking 10% off of their budget that they submitted. Support budgets have percentage reductions in there. You'll see that some have more, especially facilities. And then we also are at the end of a 10-year energy bond. And you will see that amount in there. And that is on the board agenda to review. That amount of money that we paid for that was about $492,000 this year. And so we'll look at the effect of that going through the budget. And then also the proposed projects for the next energy bond. Any questions on those?
No.
Okay. This is a tool that all of you have seen many times. What it is doing, it is taking the largest departments, transportation, technology and facilities and breaking out the largest, larger purchases that you have. If you can see in the, a year ago in 2018-19, in these three departments, we spent one, almost $1.5 million. We were able to increase a little bit in the current year to $1.6 million. There is that energy bond payment that was sitting there. And for the next upcoming year, this amount right here in transportation is the used bus that we have bought. We only bought one bus. These are the leased buses. And next year, that is total price of two new buses under the grant that the facility director had written. Technology, I have worked with Jessica Cotter and Kevin Galberath to skinny up what they feel are the critical. These are the replacement of devices, whether they be Chromebooks or also staff devices, no infrastructure. And then the facilities here, 260,000. You just saw the reductions. Those are the only, the two projects that Ricky Brown has come to the board to ask for.
That was, that's, that was, we're going to ask that, that's the 260, the 100 for the parking lots and the 160 for the roofs that we just adjusted down.
Yeah. He, he has a contingency portion in there, another part. And in his budget, there's probably $30,000 that's not allocated at this point. That would be your, oh my goodness, boiler blue or, you know.
Got to have that, right?
A little bit in there for a better.
Yes, of course.
And we just had an update from Jessica about technology and the survey she did. So how does that work within the budget that you're talking about here? With Chromebook purchases, then be with Title Fund or at risk or whatever that Steve was talking about? I'm just wondering how these all connect.
Right, so I'll, I, I think now that you put those all together, there, there is some money that is reallocated in Title I and Title IV in this current year. And they are being re-diverted or diverted to replacement of the Chromebooks that are out. And so in both of those, I think there's about $80,000 in this current year budget that is being reallocated for that. And then also there are, is the CARES money. And that is a portion of it or will be some portion of it. But it's also competing with mental health. And it's also competing with some other things also. And I believe that Jessica and Steve talked about that. So that will all have to come together. And then there is the 100.
Hold on, I'm sorry, finish. I thought you were moving on, I just, I had a clarifying question.
Yep, no, I can be done. And then you would also add, if there is any more money in the titles for next year? I don't know that if Steve is putting that together. There could be some at-risk, but at-risk and title support our staffing. So there's not a lot of wiggle room in there. And then you will see a portion of this 160 is for refreshing Chromebooks. But those Chromebooks are, I believe Jessica had said when we had a meeting about five years old. And some of them don't even connect to, they're not able to use them. The students aren't able to use them from their homes.
Yeah, so that's why I was clarifying around that 160 or the 150 about if there was Chromebook purchase in there. Because I really do feel like that's a priority moving forward. So figuring that out moving forward for June, I think, could be helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, but we're, we're in pretty good shape there. Because like Ms. Cazgro mentioned, the Title I money can now be used. The Fed loosened up what that money could be spent on and included technology. The same thing with the CARES Act. That money also could be used for technology. And then on top of this, you got the 160 in the, in the budget. Because I too am concerned about those Chromebooks, you know, the ones that have gone out probably are not going to come back in the best condition. And I, I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Cazgro. We pretty much put every Chromebook there was out. So we don't even have anything back. You know, that, that's just going to become a necessary expenditure. But the good part about it is that you probably have three different sources to go to.
Yeah. I have to say that the curriculum department showed us today, they had been working with their Schedule B tech teachers along with the tech department. And they have a list of every Chromebook that they had. How many were deployed and how many does each building still have? So it's a pretty detailed list. It, it just seems that they are on top of that. So, and I, I think that they would always need more. And, but everybody is trying to keep track of the exact amount that we have.
I'll just add, Mr. Perry, I think you're spot on with the various resources or ways we're maneuvering money. You know, within the title money, they're, they loosened up the restraints, but there's still some things tied to it. So for example, you can't take title money that Diamond Dale was allocated and spread that over the other seven or eight buildings. So there's some still parameters. So I think in another month, once that spreadsheet's filled out, we'll have a more accurate idea of the Chromebooks. But I can tell you that the title money itself will not take care of the replacement of the devices itself. It's gonna, there'll be, it'll have to be a combination of multiple parts. And I think we'll still have to have some conversation.
Are you ready to proceed?
I think so.
Okay. So the next, the next, I don't know why I'm not, there we go. This next sheet is trying to quantify and show the magnitude of cuts that would have to be made to cover the $5 million if they of cuts that would have to be made to cover the five million dollars if that comes with a six hundred and fifty dollar per pupil allocation and reducing two hundred and fifty students. And as we worked with the finance committee, it was quite, and we were working with tiers of cuts. So what would be the first things that we could be reduced? What could be the second, and not even that we know what those reductions are, but we would start to quantify the understanding of what things cost us. And then, of course, the end would be devastating cuts that would change how whole public schools really educate students. And so as you can see here, these are, these items in blue, at this point in time, we are working to reduce, they are very uncomfortable reductions. And I've already had calls from some of the board members as this was put out in our board packet last week to discuss or understand. But these are the first wave of what we are trying to reduce to offset what we are going to get from the state and the reduction of students. So there is your general department budget. So human resources, the superintendent, the schools, their per pupil allocation, all of those, first estimate was two hundred and sixty four thousand. Next year, reduction of overtime or extra help staffing, I would say that there isn't any in whole public schools. I've left the small amount in custodial because we have to pay custodian when we have groups in our buildings on the weekends. New, this was a new program, Leadership Institute for Emerging Leaders. We may have to reorganize that. That amount of money was sitting in HR. That was a very new programs instituted this year, just removed. We are not, there is a administrator that is leaving us. We will not replace that. Reduce substitutes. This one is, uh, this one is hard, and as I was trying to unpack total substitutes, that number may not hold. What this was trying to do was to just reduce the substitutes that are in our schools when we have PD. So that's a hard one. We do have operational expenses that tore down the old ed center in this year, so we don't have to pay for heat and light and electric and all the safety and those types of things. We could reduce, this is a general amount between the estimates and actuals that falls to the bottom line every year. So I've removed it. And then we've also, if I took out all the extras from the facilities budget, what falls to the bottom line, I took that out. We have worked, I, we are not, Dr. Hornak and Rick Brown have worked very closely with Delhi Township to not utilize their mowing service this year. That was a collaborative. Both sides were a win-win on that. We will use our existing staff and high tech. We have the machines that we can do that. We will not need help, extra summer help with the, with all the schools closed. We are doing our summer cleaning at this point in time. We have, and our RAM quarterly, we have Bloom Creative Partners, we pay them. We are trying to organize to bring that in-house, use the people that we have, our own print shop, and try to do that in-house. Reduce retirement estimates. What that is, is every year we use an estimate based on the demographics of all of the people who work at whole public schools who will retire, and we will be able to reduce that, or we are. Once we get everybody's retirement for next year, it might have to go up, but we're going in skinny at this point. I have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars right now in there for next year. Subs for non-teachers, same thing, estimate to actual. And we, when we did not have a transportation assistant, we were contracting with the ISD for the routing, field trips, and the, and to help get that department organized. We do not need that anymore. Reduce our technology projects. That is a reduction from last year's infrastructure. We had to have an extra amount in there for Power School. And this year, if you remember, we're going to Power School. This is a training year, and we paid extra so that our teachers could get in, our secretaries, administrators could get in. And community ed enrichment, that program is always self-sustaining, except for the last couple of years with the amount of problems that we've had at the pool at the junior high. It is not run, it has not been self-sustaining. The next two sections that are the green and, yep.
The blue at the very top one where it said, um, CY, what does CY mean?
Oh, Cal, I'm so sorry. Current year.
Oh. So I'm wondering, will we then in June get the breakdown from each of the schools with their carryover like we normally do? Cause I feel like this is gonna be a bigger hit for some schools than others. So I just wanted to look to see the impact.
Right. I think that we need to see where we are at. One of the reasons, this number here at two hundred and sixty four does not have the carryover in it, and it is collect, it is at eight percent. And I think you brought up a great point, Laura. These dollars go straight into the classroom for the students. And so I think I calculated eight percent because if we don't need ten percent, it's not that much more. And we don't need to scoop it from the carryover, but we'll have to make those decisions as we go forward with each step. So we'll know more in June, well, we'll know more this Friday. We'll know more in June, we'll know more in August.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was the only one that was confusing to me.
Yep, sorry about that.
That's right.
I have to tell you that Mr. Bakken had asked me to explain things more, so I just missed that one, so. Yep. The, the next items in green are more for informational purposes. They are items that are in, or these are the reductions of the retirements and the people that have resigned. We had originally in this year's budget, put in a special ed coach. That person was not hired after one posting, and so we are not putting that in next year. A nurse, we had originally put, we still have one nurse, and we had another nurse retire, and we weren't able to fill that or hadn't filled it yet, and we were contracting, we were contracting for nursing services. So it's not that we're removing nursing services. It was just in the salary budget, and it's not being put in. So as I said, we are bargaining with all five bargaining units. As you can see, these are items that are being folded into those parameters. And then we put the average administrator cost, the average teacher, a ten-month secretary, and a pair of costs. So what does each one of those people working in the district cost? This would be their entire package. So it'd be the salary, the FICA, the retirement and wage benefits. Excuse me, leave benefits, their insurance. Then, as you can see with what we have in the blue and the green, if I added both of those columns, we only get to two point five million dollars. And so what the orange is in, it is in the devastating column, it is showing you the magnitude of the whole. If it truly is a five million dollar. And so what is, we have in our, in our school, we have been invested in the theater department. And how much does that theater department cost at whole public schools, net of the receipt? How much does athletics cost whole public schools? I am not saying that that is on the board, that we are reducing anything for next year. What the orange is, is showing you the magnitude of, we still haven't got to five million dollars with those. And the transportation, as many of you know, transportation is not a mandated service in the state of Michigan. That is, if you don't put any buses in, that is the operational cost of getting our kids to school every, every day. So that is for informational purposes now. The next spreadsheet that we have here, and let me see if I can, I have actually put, and let me set this up. I have put three years of actual results of whole public schools. What is the total revenue of the state sources that they control, what's the salary and benefits and all others? What I have done here is then, I'm just gonna go forward. So you have your state sources, you have your all other revenues, childcare, federal grants, all of those types of things, special ed that comes through. Then your expenditures, salaries, benefits, contracted staff, which would be edge of staff and high tech, all of that, and then all other. And what all other is, is heat and light and supplies and all of those types of things. So in your last three years, three years ago, this, this board, we lost a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. We had a nine point four percent fund balance. And all that is doing is a calculated number. It takes your ending fund balance, and it multiplies it against your total expenses. And then two years ago, we had a hundred, we were in a revenue greater than expenses. And last year, we were also in a revenue greater than expenses. And so this next, oh, I'm so sorry. The next item that we have, the next column is the budget. And I'm sorry, that should say updated number two. This is the budget that we are preparing to bring to you in June. I believe that our revenues will be reduced by a half a million dollars. Those are coming from community ed, that is not have, doesn't have ECC, doesn't have childcare, has netted out all the refunds that they have given them, all the pay to participate that is not there. So that will be the loss in revenues. And then I believe in the end, it will be a about one point one million dollars that we don't spend. That includes all the carryovers. And so our net number, first estimate, nine hundred thousand will get us over eleven percent fund balance. In that, we just looked at this number, five point five million dollars. Total loss, two hundred and fifty students. Middle of the road, six hundred and fifty per pupil allocation. And at this point in time, to keep us above five percent, we would, and splitting the difference that we are cutting two point five million dollars, and we will be using two point six million out of our fund balance. Okay, as you can see that going. So you're gonna have a five million dollar cut. How are you gonna take it? Half of it will come from reductions, half of it from your fund balance. So what your fund balance is kinda there for your rainy day. We have also know that we are hearing that the state will not roll back in twenty twenty to full capacity. Not everybody's gonna be buying everything. There could be cuts there. If we lose another hundred students, if we reduce two hundred and fifty per pupil, that would be another two hundred, two million dollars. At this point in time, you will have already cut two point five, and then you would have to cut six million in total. So out of that six million, you've already cut two point five. You would have to find another three point five million in your budget so that you could stay above five percent. Now you are in the range where the state of Michigan will start to come visit whole public schools. Will help you to negotiate the cuts that you have, and we will, we have to send packages. We would have to pay for auditors. Now, we will be in that boat with a lot of other school districts. So, but you have to know that the state of Michigan enters the picture to help you maintain once you get at five percent. So just for giggles, I had said, okay, we will be over all of this in two years. And in the twenty twenty three, if we are able, and I didn't, I didn't even put how we're gonna get there. I just said somehow the state of Michigan's gonna give us two million dollars back. We're not gonna cut anything else, and we would somehow come in with six hundred and fifty seven. Now, of course, at that point, we wouldn't have any income. We would, of course, put less reductions in. So this is speculative at best. I've told you my assumptions. How I got there would be, these are, are the hard ones that you have seen. You've seen how we got to the reduced revenues. You're seeing how we have to get to the all other expenditures. I would be done talking unless you had comments or questions. Ben, you're on mute.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Kim. Well, obviously, this is a scary and painful and challenging exercise because you're right, there's so much that we don't know. But we still have an obligation to the budget of the district and making sure we continue to stay in control of our own decisions. And so, you know, at a high level, some of my thoughts, which we talked about the finance committee meeting, when we go to the revenue side, it is difficult to predict, but, you know, when we look at, you know, taking shared time away, had that never happened, you know, the reduction of kids last year would have been eighty-five. So the forecast that you have of two hundred and two, one hundred and twenty, that being shared time, you know, was very reasonable. With a district of fifty five hundred students, as we talk, just one percent of that, just one percent of kids in the district that, that parents choose not to send back, you know, in the fall, gets you to that two fifty. So in terms of your revenue projection, these are certainly not worst-case scenario projections that we're looking at by any means, you know, or a two hundred and fifty reduction in headcount, and then you're not even showing the thousand dollar per pupil reduction that we have heard. You know, and so using six fifty, I, you know, it is very reasonable to get to that five point five million dollar number. You know, and looking at the, the sheet that you have, you know, that shows the different tiers, I'll call it, of cuts. I like the headings that you have there. You know, this isn't low pain, medium pain, high pain. These are all exceptionally high pain decisions. There, there's nothing that's easy. You know, you have uncomfortable, you have painful, and you have devastating. And I think just for information purposes, to see that is important on those, you know, what we're trying to do with some of the other cuts there is avoid the devastating. That's the goal. And so, but this last sheet that you have, that if we really were to look at the job of making sure that we maintain a fund balance of over five percent. And as President Perry said last week, or last meeting, I'm sorry, you know, this is why it's so important to have that fund balance over ten percent. And being over ten percent, you know, Kim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, but that is by no means a relatively high fund balance. If you look at our peers throughout the state at all.
We are not at the average fund balance in the state of Michigan. It is higher than us.
Right.
And that's now Detroit, yep.
Yep. So thank goodness we, we had at least what we had. And I think, you know, as organizations, for-profit, nonprofit, governmental and other, look at tough decisions that they need to make. You know, some are looking at it and saying, we, we need to, you know, operationally have a balanced budget. We're not saying that. We're, we're right out of the gate saying, we're gonna eat into that fund balance and be okay running a structural deficit. But it just shows how painful it's gonna be to get to that two and a half million dollar number, or even a six million dollar number. So there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of variables. But, but I think based on the information we've had, you've done a nice job here, Kim. Thank you for the, some of the changes you've made in your time with the finance committee and other things, because we have some very, very difficult choices to make to limit the impact. But the impact's not gonna be none. We know that. And so that's gonna be the goal, is limiting that impact. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of things to add and share with trustee or treasurer Bakken's comments as well. But Kim, if you can just scroll up on that page right there a little bit. Yeah. So if, if you wanna see the thousand dollar reduction, it's really the six fifty and the two fifty. You know, we basically take that hit over, over two years. But the number that really jumps out to me, and I think it's on a couple of screens above, if you can go to the per pupil. Yeah, there. You know, it's one thing to take a six hundred and fifty dollar reduction. You know, it's one thing to take a six hundred and fifty dollar reduction, it's another thing to lose a student. You know, at seventy-five hundred, and that's after being reduced, because we were at about eighty-two. It really is imperative for all of us to do whatever we can to make sure that, you know, our students do return back to us in the fall. And, and that's everything, that's, you know, making sure that they feel safe, making sure that we have facilities that, you know, when our parents look at it, they, they, they say, hey, you know what? Hold has done everything they could and can do to make sure that these kids are safe. So I, I just commented, it, it's imperative that at this point in time, that we do everything and anything we can to make sure we get all of our students back.
Okay, um, the next item I have, the last slide on this fun presentation, almost to say what we're gonna do in June. So we will update the general fund budget in June for the nineteen twenty. And you'll also see the first original budget for the general fund in twenty twenty-one. Um, we're also at that going to do the food service. And of course, food service is taking quite a hit also, um, as they have continued to support our community in a Herculean effort. So we will look at the twenty nineteen twenty budget update and also the twenty twenty-one original budget. We do have a truth and taxation hearing, we have to get those numbers from our county. Um, and when we do that, we will have a state aid borrowing note resolution. And so that will, um, I'm already working with our Baker Tilly to be able to understand how much we have to borrow next year to be able to make cash flow. And then we will also review the bids for the potential twenty twenty-one bond proposal. And so that is an, another part of the, um, that's eight point five. So this is just really to say what we will do, I'll tell you about that when we get to eight point five. All right, um, the next item that we have under here is the energy bond discussion. And as you know, we have talked about this several times at other board meetings. Um, and this is a summary of really where we're at, at this point in time. Um, the district has been working, and Rick Brown has been working with the contractor, going through our buildings, trying to understand the potential energy bond savings that could be, um, come from an energy bond. Uh, what are the projects that we want with the biggest payback, the quickest one turned around? Um, and there is a sample here. Um, we're a long way actually from this, the finish line of a decision. And this is important before we go on, we are quantifying the exact projects that we would want to even speculate um, that we would, this energy bond would make sense for whole public schools. And we're doing that because, as I had said, our budget right now in this year paid four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And are we able, and does the cash flow work for whole public schools? And will the savings be great enough that we are able to put that in the twenty twenty-one budget? So we're, um, we would need to send out requests for proposals yet on the selected projects. So first you'd find your projects you wanted that had a big bang that would give you the savings. Then you would send out the request for proposals, and the Board of Education would look and review the, all of those proposals. In that proposal, you would also have, what is your borrowing cost? Where are the interest rates, um, and setting those parameters for the district? Um, you would have to sell the bonds, and then you could start the projects. And so what I have done is put, and let me get this up here and turn it around, there you go. I have tried to write on this, um, how this spreadsheet is working. But here are the total projects that have been identified for the Sam, um, this, uh, this example. Um, the building automation controls, so this would be that when the buildings are occupied in the, uh, weekend. So I'll come in to this building during the weekend, and the air conditioning will just be going. So why, so the controls could be set that you could move it up or down. Um, it is a big requirement of this district. If we were going to look at the lighting projects that we just didn't wanna change out bulbs, we also wanted to do the fixtures. Um, and then there are, um, have been some, identified some areas in our pools. Not necessarily, the senior high has some, but the junior high, if we were able to review the water fixture control panels of that. So that, at these, at this point in time, that would be what those are. It's coming out at four million dollars. Um, and at, we have looked at, we had wanted to be at a finance term of ten years. Um, I had put a cap on that whole public schools doesn't wanna pay more than four hundred thousand dollars a year in this project. Um, and I had said ten years, four hundred thousand, but with the projects that are identified, and there's no RFPs, where, I just told you we're far away, this is generating twelve years. At this point in time, the interest rate when we first did this, Baker Tilly had helped us, it was two point five. I don't think we're at two and a half percent anymore, I think we're at like three or a little above, I think we're south of that number. So that would have to be. But this is getting into, and let me show you, this would be where we are, and it should say nineteen twenty right here. But this would be if you did the RFP, you sold the bond, you started the projects, those would start this summer. You would get some savings this summer. But of the projects that are identified, you also could, would get utility rebates that would come directly back as checks to whole public schools. And so with this limited amount of energy savings, and that is energy that is calculated, not used. So kilowatt energy, um, there are device attachments right to the things that are generating the, and, um, energy. And then there are some operational savings. And we are, um, Rick Brown is driving this number of how, how many contracted servicers, or how many contractors that we could remove, they're helping us with our energy. And as you can see, that is the number that he is driving, the rebate. So in this first year, we have the potential to save four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, of which in the first year, our total payments would be four oh seven. So it looks like you would have a positive cash flow in the first if all the assumptions were made. In the second year, you would have your energy savings, no rebates, but you would still have your payments. And so that is how this works to be able to evaluate those. You would get a updated sheet with all of the projects that are actually selected, and Rick is reviewing those right now, um, before this was ever decided on. And I'm done, unless you have questions.
Kim, I had a question, are any of these projects that are proposed, would any of them have a payback period of, say, three or four years?
I don't think so. You have a guaranteed term, your terms of your savings that are coming. So if you want to, are you saying, well, for me, the calculation is, you're gonna spend four million dollars, right? When are the guaranteed savings, one, two, three, four, five? I mean, how, how many of those take it to get to four million dollars? It looks like it would be, how many years?
Six, seven?
Ten. Somewhere between, yep, eight and ten, that's what the sheet is calculating.
All right, I guess I look at it a different way, see, see where that year twelve is, and if you follow it all the way across, that means that after twelve years cumulatively, I'm only saving a hundred and sixty-three thousand?
From the cash flow in total?
Basically, you get a positive in year one, because you don't have the outflow and you have the rebate. And then you eat away at that for seven years. And then you start slowly building, and, and most of the savings are late in life. I mean, it's just, it's just tough, you know, when you're really relying on big savings numbers that are in years fifteen through twenty from now.
Yeah, especially with the innovation that can occur after, you know, after that time period. I mean, if you, you were, if you were telling me I could get my money back in four or five years, that's different than having to wait until year thirteen to really start seeing significant savings. And by then, I gotta believe that technology, everything else, being what it is, um, you're gonna be replacing really the same stuff that you replaced in year one.
On the lighting, on the lighting side, I can tell you that, at least, cause I do, all my, my business stuff is under, under lights, under high efficiency lights, we're pretty close. I don't think the technology's gonna change that much in the next seven or eight years. I think we're, we've hit the limit of LEDs, maybe incremental improvements, but they're not, six years from now, there's not gonna be an LED that's twice as efficient. I just don't think physics allows for it. Um, so I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the LED chain, technology not changing. I don't know about automation and then these other, this other, uh, what was the other thing on there? But, um, for the lighting, I'm pretty comfortable with that, just based on my experience.
So a little broader scope that you have is that these are improvements to the facilities that you have at whole public schools. One of them with the pool automation is, one of them at the junior high is, that's going to break. And so you have a compressor, and I'm not sure if Rick Brown is still on the call so that, um, or at this meeting, so that he could help at that too. Um, and some of these things, the argument could be made that, well, if we pass our bond proposal in twenty twenty-one, all of these projects could go under there. Um, and that is an assumption that you will pass that bond and you could put them in there. So I think that is, but on the other side of that, if your bond doesn't pass, you would have some savings, or you have things that you are going to fix that you won't be able to fix with a five million dollar hole from a per pupil allocation and a loss of students. And so I agree with all of the arguments or assumptions that are there, it's just, uh, uh, looking at the issue a little broader.
Yeah, and I would say to add to that, if you went with the bond issue, if you scroll up a little bit, you save that ninety-two thousand, if you scroll down a little bit, see that fifty-three thousand? So you're at a hundred and forty thousand plus just in fees, that if you pass the bond issue, you get all of that back.
Oh, this right here?
Yeah, plus the ninety-two to Baker Tilly. That, that, that's kinda hard too, that's, that's, that's pretty expensive, um, outflows for, you know, something that, uh, may be done by another source of funds.
If you pass it.
Correct, but that doesn't mean that you can't go back at this a year from now and look at this energy savings all over again. I guess where I'm going with it i- is it's based on that budget that we used a fund balance. And there's still some questionable numbers in the fact that we would have to make some additional cuts. You know, i- is this the right thing at the right time? That's, that's my question.
How much would just the pool, water fixture automation, whatever that compressor thing you were talking about failing? How much of that would be this four million dollars, without the lights and the other things?
Yeah, I, I believe that the lights are driving it, and the, and the bulbs.
I would.
Yeah, and I-
A lot of money for lights too, so I, I would believe that.
I believe the two pool packs, which is the dehumidification and the air purification and the heating and cooling for the pools was close to a million.
A million, so is there, is there value in doing an energy bond for just a million? In other words, just doing that, uh, making, lowering our expectations, assuming that these things are gonna break anyway. Um, and then, um, I don't know that you would get the, um, rebates from the utilities for that, because you're probably getting most of those rebates for the lights. Um, is there value in, in just considering a smaller package? This is already fairly small to begin with in the grand scope of things, but maybe a million dollars, is it doable? Just a thought.
I would have to check with Doc Train, I, I guess we didn't go that small, we looked at-
So when, when we looked at just the bulbs, because they gave us some different scenarios, and when we just did the bulbs, not the fixtures, this number was above two hundred thousand. So I, I know that there would be significant rebates if you reduce from the pool. And I don't know what the breakdown of those rebates are.
Maybe it's might be mostly in the automation and the lights, I don't know about the, the pool. I can see the utility giving you money for automation.
So the, the, the question on the table is, would you like us, Rick and I, to continue with this project or not? And that is your, that is your call. Um, and I think that Mr. Perry did drive that home, there's four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in our expenses for this year um, that are on the table. Um, and this is what this is trying to show in the cash flow for next year. That would be a positive cash flow for next year, but not the year after.
Was that reduction of the four hundred and some odd thousand for the energy payment, was that built into the calculations that we just saw for the deficit spending?
Um, I did not put that on as a reduction.
So that's an easy, almost half a million dollars, uh, that we wouldn't have to spend in a deficit situation?
Correct.
But then projected in, increased costs for the next seven years declining?
Um, yes, and you have the energy costs that would not reduce, you're right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's nine, ninety percent of the savings was, on the rebates were, uh, from the lighting, excuse me, Dr. Olgram.
Thank you.
And this is the guaranteed program, or if we're not seeing the savings, they kick in the difference, is that right?
Correct, and that's calculated, that is mandatory through the state of Michigan.
I could just, I, I mean, I shared this when they were in the one day, you know, that I've, I've really struggled with these, with these deals before. And I've looked at larger ones, like with the Housing Commission, when I was a commissioner there, and I just struggled with, and, um, you know, how to come, i- it's, it's easy to look at it in a spreadsheet and say, if this, this is what it would have cost, and this is what it did cost, and, and we'll owe you the difference. But there's so many variables that actually, when it gets down into the weeds of how they calculate the, what would it have cost, you know? That I've just, I've never gotten totally comfortable with it, and, and with the savings coming that much later. It's why I'm having a tough time with this one here right now with, even though I, I get it with, you know, in that first year, it was sabotaging with the nearly five hundred thousand bump, but, um,
Okay, so can I just, um, suggest that we go back and look at just lighting and fixtures? And, well, I'm not sure, Rick, I, would you want to do the controls, right? Lighting, fixtures, fixture lighting and controls? And just the pool controls?
My only fear would be if we didn't do the pool back, especially for the junior high, is that it would fail. And especially with the deficits we're looking at, we wouldn't be able to keep that pool open, cause we, you have to have it. That was, that was my fear with that, that's why I had him look at that, those up.
I mean, talk, talk more about that, Rick, because I mean, it's different if we are anticipating, you know, a problem, and this is gonna address it. So I guess talk more about the pool a little bit, if you will.
Well, the junior high pool has a full pack with two large compressors that, that run the dehumidification, and one has failed. And so it's running on one, and it's doing okay, I mean, it's comfortable and it's not, you know, we're not in critical mode. But if it were to fail, depending on what, what the error was or what happened, you know, it could be critical also to where it would be, you know, completely down. So that, that's, I was kinda excited, I guess, that they added that, just because that would take care of a big worry of mine. And I'm worried, I'm sure to Heather Crandall's programs and the junior high, uh, gym teachers. I don't know if we would wanna go to lighting and just that, and, and leave the controls for the bond. I guess we could, uh, negotiate any of that, it's, it's up to, up to the board, it's up to you guys.
How much does a compressor cost?
You know, I, I have not got a, a solid number on that, I just know what the full replacement cost was. I, I have not, I was never thinking that I would actually get to do that this year. So I figured we'd limp along until the bond came, until this came along. I could get a price. If you would like me to.
Is that easy to do? I mean, are these three different projects, if you will, are they easily broken out separately?
I believe so. I believe, I'm working with Train right now, that they have a good idea what the, the numbers would be for their equipment anyways. And the lighting's all subbed out anyways. We do, we would, they would give us prices for train controls and train equipment for the, the pool pack. So that would give us a good idea.
Hey, that guaranteed energy savings column. Kim, I'm not sure how deep you guys dug into that column and those numbers, but maybe you can make me feel a little bit more confident in that. When they, when they say guaranteed energy savings, are they comparing that to same period prior year by month? Are they, you know? That's the one that I've always been really skeptical of, like how, you know? So if, you know, based on what our monthly utility cost is for the district, you know, let's just say it's a million bucks on average, just pull a number out of the sky. Oh, go ahead.
We have given them all of our bills for the past year, for last year, 18, 19, and all of them through this year. So they have had two years to see what electricity and gas are for the school district. And so then I think the projections are, what do the units or the new ballasts or the new things, what do those take? And I'm sure they're all rated and they know that. Is that, is that, um, is that correct, Rick?
Ben, they, they actually even took it a step further. They actually spoke to all my staff. And they get, and I lived through this in my previous job. They actually talked to the people that live in the buildings and said, Rick, how long are the lights on at Oakhamus High School? And I was able to tell them a pretty good number, you know, 15 hours a day, Monday through Saturday, and Sundays, you know, eight hours. So they even took it a step further. And I do know that they, they get their measure and verifications right through the state of Michigan. They have to follow like a strict, I don't know, we'll call it a code, but a, a system. That's how they come up with that, with the bills, talking to our people and a formula that comes up with that number. That is the big push, though, that, I mean, if you look at that number, it's, it's large over the years.
Sure. I guess that's, that's where, when I've talked to these groups in the past, I've, I've always gotten stuck, and it's just not getting comfortable enough that, you know, because there's so many variables that play when you're talking about utility costs that, that, okay, so you could average out, it could be two years, it could be 10 years of usage, that if you have different periods, you know, it's the same period, but your, our utility cost is only down $200,000 for, for that same period. And it was supposed to be 300,000, when it actually comes to writing that check, you know, where, well, you know, the temperatures were different or, uh, you know, something else was different in terms of variables. Like, it's not like you can go run a simulated, you know, July of 2020, and then go back in time and do July of 2020 again. You're still making some assumptions there. And I, and, and I've just never gotten totally, you know, comfortable with that payout piece in terms of that, that, that word guaranteed. It sounds really good, but.
I don't know if we could talk to other finance directors and other districts that they can give us references, and we could talk to them that they've done over the past, maybe even five years, and see if, if it's, if it's real, I guess, or if it actually panned out, Ben. I'm not sure. I think we could do that.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just sharing where I've always gotten a little bit, you know, where I've always struggled a little bit. Again, just when you look at, other than that first year, which, you know, there's your carrot to do it. Uh, but they're recognizing that the net cash flow is going to be worse in the next seven years after that. And you really recognize most of that savings later. I mean, if you take that 4.21, 2 million, and you actually do, like, you back that down to a net present value for those future years, 20 years out, it's, it's a lot less than 4.2 million, so.
So this program, this program will be around next year, correct?
Correct. It'll be, it could be in December. Yep.
But what I'm getting at is a year from now, we know some answers. We know our, you know, state budget per pupil. We know probably whether or not a bond is going to be passed or not. And, you know, the cost benefit of waiting a year for this thing, you know, that, that's what I'm wondering. Especially when, if a bond issue was passed, I'm looking at saving 143,000 fees that, you know, I understand the pool, and the pool, you know, if we had to spend the money, we had to spend the money. But I guess another way of looking at that is, we can borrow the board bond resolution, like 5% of our SCV or something like that? I mean, there, I, I guess what I'm getting at is there's some other alternatives if we had to do something. We could look to do it that way, because I'm having a hard time, after 12 years, I'm saving 163,000.
And gross, you know, after, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But those are, those are just my thoughts.
Yeah. Hey, hey, Kim, for the items that we have on the agenda that are under financial matters, do any of these require a resolution? Or as, as you go into strategizing about, preparing for that June update, do you need any guidance from us or anything from a vote perspective? I guess what I'm wondering in asking that President Perry is just with the closed session that we have coming up. And, and I know we have some other parties that are, that are involved there. Should we adjust the agenda to move to that, to get that done? Or, or, Kim, do you need any?
Sure. The, the other thing is just the matrix on the bond and the proposals that came in. So what this was, was really a nod to the proposed assumptions to go through. So we know what we should put in to our budget expenses for next year. On the agenda, we did not have this asked, that we needed a motion. But we were asking for guidance, and that's why it was presented, because it is such a large number, and we have such a hole in our budget.
President Perry, do you think this warrants any, any kind of guidance or resolution as it would relate to the decisions that?
Yeah, I, I would just throw it back to, to those contractors and, and, or that contractor, Train, and just let them know what our situation is and what our concerns are. And see if, you know, is there an alternative there that leads us to a better return on our investment? That maybe it's not this whole package, or maybe it is fixing that pool? I, I just wonder if, you know, when you, the three of you meet, if you don't come up with something different that you bring back to the table?
I understand.
Thank you.
Last item is for your information only. We did have the bid openings for the proposals for the bond, the potential bond that we would go to the voters in May of 2021. And these are the respective bidders. Rick Brown and myself are in the process of going through. I started the owner's rep trying to make, find, trying to read them, come up with a matrix that hit the high points for the compliance of the bids. And this is just an FYI. And we will bring them all to you in the June Board of Education meeting. And you can decide what your next steps are, who you would like to ask to go forward, who would you like to interview, all, whatever your choices, this will be done in the June 20 meeting. That's all I had, just an information.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Cosgrove before we move on?
No, thank you, Kim.
Dr. Hornak, is there anything on the calendar that you wanted to point out?
Uh, no, it's straightforward. Uh, you know, our next board meeting is, Ms. Cosgrove has mentioned is, is coming up, and that'll be June 8th. We'll be preparing, be preparing board packets for you in approximately three weeks. Everything else is somewhat tentative.
So we'll move to old business? If nothing there, we'll move to new business. And I know, Trustee Colgan, you wanted to make some comments about Dr. Hornak's evaluation?
Yeah, so, well, as you know, we use the Marzano tool for the district leadership. And so we'll open that tool up, and he has to fill out the rubric that he's filled out the prior year. What I went ahead and did, because this year we have our board goals, and I went through the board goals and listed them, and just made a chart of where I felt like the Marzano tool linked to each of our board goals. So when I sent out the Google form for you guys to kind of fill out your thoughts for each of them, I tried to connect the evaluation tool to our goals that we have for the next five years to kind of guide the work moving forward. I just wanted your thoughts. I don't have it for you guys to look at now. I apologize for that. And I wanted to talk about it, if you guys thought, because I don't know how we continue to have a valuation separate from what our goals are for our district or our vision and mission. So that's my thoughts for doing that. And prior, we really didn't have that. Thoughts, concerns?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd like to see it, but it seems very reasonable, so.
Yeah, and there's definitely been draft forms you guys can look at and think about, because what I really need help with, the 26 elements that go under each of the domains, may need to be tweaked and where we want to put them. Because I feel like our first goal kind of around students, you know, well-being, health, and a lot of what the evaluation tool uses or is directed towards sits under that category, where communication or our, having the best, I can't remember how we worded it, the best staff or having the best place to get the best staff. Ben, you're the champion of that. I kept my wording's off. But just figuring out where those should go, and then how we can then use that tool moving forward. And my plan is to link that right into his evaluation and not so much under each element, putting evidence in things. Because after that first year of having him have huge binders of that, I don't want our time or his time to be used towards finding evidence and putting it into binder, vice versa. So that's where the goal is.
Yeah, if you could send us that, either a link or send it to us directly or however you want to do it, then also-
Go ahead. Yep, absolutely.
Just give us a due date.
Yeah, what I will do is, well, send it out, well, I swear with Dr. Hornak, too, this is news to him, too. So surprise, Dr. Hornak, I'm sorry. It's not anything. I think you'll appreciate it, because you'll see it all tied together. What I think the first thing is to do is give a week or so to go through it and be sure that we agree with where the elements for the Marzano align with the goals. And I'm going to say some of them will have to be a little bit loose, but I, like I said, I don't feel like we need to mark each of those elements in the way. But in the general, what do we think that that goal meant into those in general elements? You know, reflect that.
Okay.
So I'll send that out hopefully tomorrow. And then how about if I give you just a week to look it over? And then from there, Dr. Hornak, and then what we'll do is kind of the same thing under those goals you would, you know, what are, what are some highlights? What are some things to work towards kind of wording? If everyone agrees with that.
Seems reasonable, Kim.
So I'll send it out, and then we can get some more feedback on that, especially with Dr. Hornak.
All right, we'll move to section 12. And we are in need of going into closed session.
I will make a motion that we go into closed session to consult attorneys pursuant to MCL 15.268, section 80, John Doe, by and through his next friends, Jane Doe and Richard Doe, plaintiff versus whole public schools defendant.
All right, I have a motion. Secretary Bureau, if you could do a roll call?
Back in?
Yes.
Colgan?
Yeah.
Dalton?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Bureau, yes. Perry?
Yes.
I don't know if we got a second, but I will second if we didn't do that.
Okay, with that, Mr. Galbraith, if you could.
I will start putting participants in a waiting room. All right, Dr. Hornak, I believe that the list is as you sent me. Board members, yourself, the board's secretary, Christine Lopez, Mr. Mullins, and Mr. Miller. There was one other name that I didn't see in the list.
Bunny is, it doesn't look like Bunny is going to be with us tonight.
That's my assistant. She would, she would be.
Okay, fair enough.
Kim is rejoining.
Okay.
And I will stop recording now.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Great.
Good night, everyone.
Everybody.